Got the okay to start our Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. So if we're all ready to go here, let's start with oral communication, which is a two-minute opportunity to speak on issues not on our Housing Authority agenda. Is there anyone here that wishes to? I'm sorry?
Mr. Vice Chair, may I do the introductions and the roll call for you?
Okay, all right, I'm jumping again. Go ahead.
No worries. The Board of Washington County is now meeting as the Housing Authority Board of Directors for Washington County for this November 3, 2020 meeting. Director Willie?
Here.
Director Treese?
Here.
Director Savara?
Here.
Director Rogers?
Here.
Director Roper?
Here.
Director Scoughton?
Yep.
And I will announce that Director Harrington is on a call with the Governor and is excused from this meeting. So with that, we'll go to oral communication, Mr. Director, and we do not have anyone signed up for this first part for the meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next item is our consent agenda, which I think consists simply of approval of minutes for September 29, 2020. Do you hear motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, okay, consent agenda is approved. Presentation, we go on to our Work Board Study Session. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner Schauten and Board. It's good to see everybody in person this morning. So I'm going to be presenting about a demonstration program created by the Department of Housing and Urban Development called Moving to Work today. So please move on to the next slide. So I'm going to kind of just jump right into the presentation for time's sake and kind of get us grounded in the background of Moving to Work. So Moving to Work is a HUD demonstration program that is created by Congress in 1996. In our country, there's around 3,300 public housing authorities, and only around 39 of them are moving-to-work designated organizations. In the last couple of years, HUD and Congress has decided to create 100 new Moving to Work agencies. And just as a reminder, Moving to Work gives Housing Authorities some really, really unique abilities to waive certain policies, design local programs that work for the community that the Housing Authority is actually working inside of, and to spend HUD money more flexibly. So I might ask that you move the slide forward just one more. So the last two slides were really just focused on some really unique MTW programs that have been created in San Diego and in Tacoma. And these are just to demonstrate some of the really unique types of programs that you can do that normal housing authority like ours cannot do. I was part of this program in Tacoma that's being replicated across the country now, for example, and we actually put our rental assistance vouchers with homeless families, kindergartners, first graders, second graders, to stabilize an elementary school that was actually turning over the student population 100% every single year because of homelessness. So we were able to actually put the vouchers with families of kids, stabilize the school, and work with the children on improving their education attainment and help the families stabilize and start finding work and jobs. So these are the types of programs, just to give you a taste, that can be developed with MTW authority that a standard housing authority such as ours cannot do currently. For the application process, we met with the Board last year in May of 2019, and we put a letter of interest in with HUD stating we would like to become a Moving to Work agency. We had a presentation, this is, goodness, probably 15, 16 months ago now since we came to this Board and discussed this. HUD finally responded several months later than we expected and asked us to go ahead and put in a formal application for the MTW program. So they did not give us a very spacious timeline. It's a tight timeline. The application itself has to be into HUD by January 8, 2021. And so we're in the process right now. We're having meetings with our residents, we're preparing application materials, and then informing, of course, our Board and county administration. So as we discuss the Moving to Work program, what is the vision? Why does the Housing Authority even want to apply for the Moving to Work program? I think we get down to three really basic facts that align really well with where the Housing Authority sees ourselves in the community and what we want to do with the families that we serve. The first is increased cost effectiveness. The Moving to Work program has some unique opportunities for our organization to be more efficient in the way that we work, in the way that we structure our workflows, that just aren't available to non-Moving to Work agencies. Second, increased opportunities for self-sufficiency for the families that we serve. And again, that's a really big part of what our organization is helping our work-able families who are interested in doing. We want to help them increase their earned income, and if they so choose, become self-sufficient and move from the programs, opening up programs for other families. The third statutory objective, and again, vision for the Housing Authority, we want to simply increase housing options in Washington County. And that can come in a variety of different ways. That means creating more units, different types of programs, different types of subsidies that are more nuanced, that assist families in the ways that they need to be assisted. And again, the MTW program has a lot of tools that would become available to our tool bag if we were to have this designation. Just kind of moving forward on this, again, some of the benefits of Moving to Work at the Housing Authority, we could reduce some of that administrative work that we do, which is checking income, assets of everybody consistently. Instead, push a little bit more on helping our families find the educational opportunities that they want, help them find employment, and then work towards self-sufficiency. And this slide just kind of shows exactly how much our per-unit costs in Washington County have gone up for the program over the course of the last several years. So Washington County's Housing Authority right now is the most expensive voucher program in the state of Oregon. It's more expensive in Multloma County, Clackamas County, and it continues to rise. And so while the MTW program, it doesn't bring in extra money, it allows for more flexibilities that, again, the Housing Authority can work with the community, work with its Board, and work with its residents to figure out different ways to shift costs and resources, to find different ways to serve more families. So there's a long list of things that the Housing Authority can do with Moving to Work authority. The options are really in the hundreds, different types of policy changes, program changes, and that's something that's done usually by an MTW agency over the course of time, not right away, but over the course of years, in consultation with its community and with its residents. But this is a unique MTW brand, so to speak, because there's an initial HUD requirement to come into the program, and that's implementing something called a tiered rent program. Before I speak about what a tiered rent program is, though, I just wanted to say that there's several types of households that would be excluded from this. First, elderly households. Second, disabled households. Third, households on something called a public housing or flat rent. We don't have very many of those households, just a handful, and then families who are in our self-sufficiency program. So I don't want to get too technical here, but I'm going to get a little technical here about the tiered rent program. So once you exclude all the families that I just spoke about, that boils it down to just our work-able families. And that's around 760 families that are considered work-able in this population. If we were to receive this MTW designation, HUD would come in, split the family 50/50. There'd be a control group who would continue with the same rent calculation methodology that we've had for decades and that HUD mandates. The other 50%, a test group, would be put into this tiered rent calculation. What HUD's really testing for at a 30,000-foot level is, would this rent model encourage work-able families to increase their earned income and move towards self-sufficiency? So there's some really interesting things baked into the tiered rent model, which basically allow families to earn more money without having to report it to the Housing Authority, to encourage them to find jobs, increase their education, increase their employment opportunities, make more money, and simply not have to report it as often to the Housing Authority. So it's really kind of a program that HUD really wants to lean into and see if that's something that could work nationally to encourage work-able families towards self-sufficiency. When we talk about impact, there's several things that we look at at the Housing Authority level. We look at rental impact, we disaggregate data. So there's around 760 families that are in this work-able population, and as a reminder, only 50% would be put into a tiered rent group. But we ran some different financial modeling just to see what the impact would be. And as you could see, overall, there'd be about an $11 rent increase across all the programs for the tiered rent model. There's an outlier there, our project-based Section 8 program, but the sample size is statistically pretty low, so I'm looking into, I think it's just one family, that would see a larger rent increase. That's what's driving that. The other thing that's really important, I think, at the Housing Authority and the Department level, is we're really trying to disaggregate data when we make policy decisions. And this is really a policy decision, changing rent models. And so it's helpful for us to really disaggregate this information and say, okay, we have a large impact, but what does this look like if we get a little more nuanced in the data? And so the thing that we did see is that larger families are seeing higher increases in rent than smaller families. And then when we look at black African-American families who are going to see a rent increase, it's 62% compared to 54% with white Caucasian families. And black African-American families would see a $14 rent increase versus a $10 for white. And then we look at ethnicity, Hispanic families would see a 58%. 58% of families would see a rent increase compared to 54% of families non-Hispanic, and a $5 rent difference there. The other thing that we were really mindful of was looking at family size. And what we found is there's a handful of families, around 33, who use something that's called a childcare expense. And again, this is a little nuanced, but that's affecting the rent amounts for some of these families with more children because they wouldn't have that allowance in a tiered rent. So single parents with larger, would see larger increases than families with two parents in the household. So that's something that the Housing Authority takes very seriously. And again, we're disaggregating this data for a reason. We want to make, we want to lead with race when we're making decisions about policy changes. So we have a couple mitigation strategies that we're looking at for this. The first being, I mentioned that the households would be split 50/50. So at the initial selection, we've been having discussions with HUD and how they would work with us on the initial selection to reduce or eliminate the impact on larger families and communities of color. And second, HUD does require the Housing Authority to have a hardship policy for any rent reform activity. And so the Housing Authority would work with HUD and implement a hardship policy that allows residents to cap the max increase within a range that's equal across the entire population. And I think I can just make a really blunt statement, which is the Housing Authority won't move forward with a rent policy change. It has a disparate impact on communities of color and larger families, and that's something that we'll work with HUD on. And I think that's important for us as an organization. So some of the questions that we've received when we talked to residents in our community is, what type of change would this be on the Housing Authority's finances? If this were implemented as-is, it'd probably be around $90,000 in savings, which would equal out to the Housing Authority being able to house 10 more families every year. But I would say with the hardship policy that we're looking at and some of the discussions that we're having with HUD, if we were accepted into the program, it's more likely this would end up being budget neutral. So I kind of went through this pretty quickly. I wanted to leave some time for questions. I know it's a lot, it's a big change, but I can say from experience, that the MTW agency really opens up a lot of opportunities for a housing authority and for the community that it's working within to do some really innovative stuff and think outside of the box and outside of those normal HUD federal regulations. And very happy to have any questions. And our Executive Director, Comey, is here also. If there's any questions, we can play back and forth on the seats.
Questions?
Comment. It is somewhat complicated. Normally, what we do is we get materials, and we saw this in our packet, but we have an opportunity to maybe spend a bit of time thinking about it. So it's a little hard just to vote on something cold today. Such my comment, but my other comment would be that I think it's a good concept. For a long time, I've wondered why we couldn't tier, because it makes a lot of sense, and it's a good step forward. I don't know that this is the only ideal way to do this, but I think it's a good approach. But are you looking for approval right now or just introducing it?
It's a really good question. So no, today, we want to just introduce the subject and give the Board some time to think about it and let us know what types of questions, concerns that you might have. The typicals process I've gone through with Moving to Work in the past has been, there's a lot more time built in, and with the January timeline, we would be back here in December and have a public hearing, but we still would not be asking for approval in December. We'd actually be coming back to the Housing Authority Board of Directors in January and asking for final approval. The HUD timeline mandates that the Board has at least 15 days after the public hearing to think about any comment that you might receive and to, you know, think through that feedback before making a final recommendation. So we still have a couple months, but we wanted to at least bring this back to the Board and give you some, some time to think this over. And, you know, again, both Comey and I and our Department, we stand ready to ask, answer any questions and address any comments. We'll also be sending you the MTW application in the upcoming weeks, the draft version of it, and some of the public feedback that we're getting, so you can see that ahead of time of the public hearing.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
Please.
Thank you for the presentation and for kind of laying out the steps. I also just want to, you know, say I really appreciate the nod towards making sure that the disparate impact isn't, isn't realized, even though kind of your initial analysis looks like there could be. I really appreciate the steps you're going to take to make sure that we're leading with race on this policy change. I think just in terms of additional information, kind of echoing Commissioner Rogers, I would love to see kind of some community engagement analysis, like, it sounds like you're going to do a few different steps with residents and with other groups. So I would love to see kind of pieces of that, like what others are saying. I think additionally, like, really thinking through an equity analysis in this change, like, I understand that what you were saying is that the, the changes, the vision for the change, you might not know exactly the steps you're going to take at this point, but I would love to understand sort of what the Housing Authority's priorities are with going this direction. Like, we heard about some of the pros and cons, but what do you hope to change eventually? So just thoughts for, for your next briefing and kind of giving us more information. I think another thing would just be really thinking through the new resource we have in the Chief Equity Officer at the County, and how do, how do we understand her role to really think through that, that lens? And maybe, maybe bringing in some partnership there to really think through the, the analysis there from sort of a third-party perspective.
Yeah, I appreciate that. This is all really good comments. We had an opportunity to spend about 45 minutes with Latricia and talk through this policy change. I think that conversation, though, is still ongoing. I would classify it as ongoing conversations. We, we kind of just gave her the information and we kind of talked through some of it initially. So I appreciate that. We'll continue to have that conversation and utilize Latricia's knowledge and expertise in this. And that's really good feedback on coming back with a little bit more specific goals and visions. Again, it was just kind of a 30,000-foot view, but we definitely have, you know, some specific ideas that we'd want to implement as we go forward with this, if approved.
Other questions? I have one. I noticed that, I noted that you got an invitation from, from the feds to participate. What's the basis? I mean, not everyone is asked, and why is it that we are asked?
Yeah, so there was an initial request for interest by HUD last year, and when we came in and we, we made that request, we met all the qualifications for what HUD was looking for as far as like, the number of work-able families, the ability for the Housing Authority with its systems to implement it. And there's a couple other checkboxes, I'm just trying to think off the top of my head, but the majority of it was, we're a high-performing housing authority. So when all the agencies applied, they pared it down to, I think, only 30 that were approved to actually apply. So there's just several qualifications that we met to be able to go to the next round.
Okay, well, obviously, congratulations.
Thank you.
That reflects well in us. Are relatively high housing costs a factor in our selection or a request for ask as well?
I don't think so, because it's really interesting when you look at who else applied. I, I think there was one other housing authority in Oregon, but they're not, it doesn't appear that they're going to move with their application. But low-cost housing authorities in the Midwest, really high-cost ones like Alameda County and other organizations like that have applied, so.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you for inviting me to the Moving to Forward public hearing that you had this past week. It was very informative. Kind of excited to have something like this. Being with not only a resident of Housing Authority, these kinds of opportunities are very scarce, and I feel as though having these kind of options and being open to trying new things, and great feedback, by the way, Mike, is just, it will provide more families with more tools, and I wish I had this 10 years ago because my life would be in a different spot. I'm grateful for the Housing Authority for all the different kind of programs that they provide residents to have, be self-sufficient or working towards that goal. And my mask keeps coming out, sorry. But thank you for a great presentation, but great feedback.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, Dick, I wanted to follow up with a comment you made, because one of the things that, that I heard was Washington County has the most expensive housing authority in Oregon. And I want, initially, the CPA in me said, why are we so expensive? And then your comment about our rents being the most expensive in Oregon, and so that's what actually drives our program to be most expensive. It's not like we're, we're spending a lot of money administratively, it's that we've got high rents, and that's what drives our program's cost. So, okay, I feel much better about that now. I just had to complete that loop, so thanks for that, Dick.
No, I appreciate that, yeah. Our per-unit costs are higher even than Multloma County, just in the voucher program. And again, Multloma County has made a lot of different changes that have driven down some of their costs, but they're right there with us. It's not that we're expressly much higher, but we are higher than Multloma and Clackamas. So the rents, and then HUD just doesn't keep up very well with inflation factors. So if our rents are going up 5%, 8%, the Housing Authority is typically seeing a 2% or 3% inflation factor from HUD, which just doesn't allow us to keep up.
Yeah, well, thank you for this presentation. I'd never heard of it before, but I'm going to go back now and, and read the material with a little bit of a different perspective. So thanks for that.
Appreciate it.
Okay, okay. Well, I see that our chair is coming back, so I will swag down the, our meeting gavel here.
So, Mr. Vice Chair, which item are we on?
We are currently just finishing up the presentation for the Housing Authority on the...
Moving to Work?
Yes, Moving to Work.
Wonderful. Are there any questions for our staff?
We, I think we're just concluding, we're just concluding our questions.
Okay, all righty.
Chair Harrington, I had mentioned to the other members of the Board, too, that we're not asking for any approvals today. It was just an informational briefing. We'd be back in December with a public hearing, and HUD mandates that our Board wait 15 days before approval, so we would be back in January for final approval. So we have some time for all of our Board members to digest the information. We'll send you more public comment. That way, you have the opportunity, if there's more questions, that we can come back to you either in other types of briefings or in December with, with more information.
I'm just catching up with my notes. May I ask a question?
Please.
The memo talked about required rent reform, and then you talked in the memo and in your presentation, it talked about additional work that you wanted to do by virtue of going this route. Do you think that it's acceptable for serving the need that you're very close to here in our community? In, in that they, they require that you do certain things in order to get different outcomes? And, you know, I'm always a little bit leery about requirements here and there, so I just wanted to double-check.
Yeah, we, we had that internal analysis, too, and we had that discussion. This is the first time HUD has ever asked in a Moving to Work program that you implement something they want you to implement versus the Housing Authority making all the decisions. I would say this, there's probably any range of opportunities of, you know, hundreds of different things that could be done with the MTW program. This tiered rent is just one, and that's the only one that they're implementing. So while we might have designed it a little bit differently, we do think that it's an acceptable rent reform model and that all the other things that we could implement over time, not right away, but over the course of time with a lot of community, you know, communications, that it would make sense for the Housing Authority to move forward.
Excellent, okay. Thank you for confirming that for me. All righty. Any last questions?
No, I've just commented, based on a text I just got, I just wanted to assure some of the folks who wanted to speak during the two-minute portion of the county, that we're not currently in the county Board's part of our, of our meeting. We are, we're currently meeting as a Housing Authority. So they just simply need to be patient, and there'll be an opportunity a little later to, to, to speak to us as the Board of Commissioners.
Right, yep, yep. All righty, thank you very much, Mr. Kreitz. Next, we'll move on to an action item for our agenda to support an application to Mercy Core Northwest for an AmeriCorps Vista member to work with us from March of 2021 through 2022 cohort.
Motion to approve?
Oh, I think we have a staff report first.
Oh, we're doing a staff report.
Just a brief staff report, yes.
Yep, that's okay. We're all getting on the same page.
Well, good morning, Chair Harrington and Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this morning. I'm joined by our Executive Director of the Housing Authority, Comey Calor, and my name is Shannon Wilson. I'm Housing Development Manager. So today, we are requesting your support of a renewal application for an AmeriCorps Vista, to have an AmeriCorps Vista member. So AmeriCorps is a federal program that's administered by the Corporation for National and Community Service. It's seen as like a domestic Peace Corps, so it's one year of service that a member provides, an organization that's targeted around poverty alleviation. So the Corporation for National and Community Services administers that program federally. At the local level, it's Mercy Core Northwest is our partner who's administering the program locally. So we currently have an AmeriCorps member that has been assisting us with our community engagement work, specifically around reaching marginalized communities within our county, and as that relates to implementation of the Metro Affordable Housing Bond Program within the county. So that person began in March of this year and has been working with us for the past eight months. So this application that we are, that we have put together and are asking for your support today would extend that project, so it would take us through February of 2022 with that. So just to clarify also, there is a small cost to the Housing Authority to have an AmeriCorps member, but clearly, the value of that member really outweighs that cost. So it will be determined by the number of members that are in our area, but it will be between $8,000 and $9,000, so fairly small investment to have the opportunity of having a member with us for another 12 months. So at this time, you know, just really wanted to provide a brief staff report and take any questions that you might have.
If I might ask, on that budget impact, might some of that be accommodated through the administration fee for the Affordable Housing Bond Program or just through the HAC budget?
Yes, I think we can determine the source for that, I think, but both are options.
All righty. Any other questions, Directors?
My excitement for AmeriCorps volunteers is chilling, but definitely excited to see someone, you know, join and continue to do that work of community engagement, so really excited about that.
And Director Savara, would you like to make the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, Director Roper. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is our second oral communication section for the Housing Authority Board. Mr. Moss, do we have anyone signed up to engage with us?
We do not per the Housing Authority Madam Director.
All righty. Are there any Board of Director announcements today? Well, it's been good to have you here in our monthly meeting, Directors. Thank you for always joining us in person. I really appreciate it. Do we have a motion to? Do we have a motion to adjourn today's Housing Authority meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Thank you, directors. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously seven to zero. We are hereby adjourned as the Housing Authority Board of Directors. Our next meeting convenes us in the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Mr. Moss, roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board of County Commissioners also meeting as the Clean Water Services Board of Directors and all other service districts is now meeting in regular session this November 3, 2020. Commissioner Willie.
Here.
Commissioner Threes.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Vice Chair Scoughton.
Here.
Chair Harrington.
Here.
All right. I'd like to just make sure everyone is informed on agenda changes from when the agenda was first published. Item 2F on our consent agenda, we have a revised policy attachment. Item 2J has been moved from the consent agenda to the action item list. So we have a 6B, as in Baker, Approval of Coronavirus Relief Fund Work Group Recommendation on Reallocation of Funds. And we have a additional item 2J from Health and Human Services for a request for a waiver from the Request for Proposals process and approve a contract with Ride Connection. We do have a significant list of presentations and proclamations today. Ms. Angie, do we have any requests for changing the order of any of those?
No, we do not, Chair.
Alrighty. Great. Well, thank you, board members. It's a big day. It's Election Day, November 3 of 2020. And we hope that the 24% of you who had, or about that, who had not yet returned your ballots as of last night are busy doing that today by the 8:00 PM deadline. Our elections team is ready and waiting to help you. So next, we'll move on to our oral communication section. And before I turn it over to Mr. Moss, I just want to contribute that we continue to receive emails from all of you in our community. We've had 13 emails just this past week, a couple related to land use and transportation, a mixed bag for assessment and taxation, including questions regarding elections items and support. And then another grab bag of kudos to staff for recognition that they've received and so forth. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Moss.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. First up in the audience, we have Mr. Tom Black to provide public comment to you. So Tom, if you want to proceed to the testimonial table and provide comment for up to two minutes for us.
Good morning, Chair and other commissioners. Been here for a while. I saw something on the agenda when I looked online, which was on the consent agenda, item 2G, which I believe is still the same item listed. This relates to the Armory over at the Washington County Fairgrounds, which is now incorporated within that complex. And we now have taken it from the Oregon Military Department, and apparently we're doing some fix-up work. I attended one of the Fairground Advisory Committee meetings when they were addressing the roofing portion of this initially. And we were talking in the range of about $110,000. And now we have bids from six bidders. We're up in the 300, mid 300,000 range to fix the roof because we didn't know the underlayment condition and such, which is which is probably what the thing's going to cost. Here's the problem. When I had gone to that meeting, I was informed that there was a capital projects improvement budget of about $1 million. And I asked for an accounting of that from one of your deputy county administrators, which I never received. I've asked a couple of times and just basically not getting that information. The question is, what do we have in our checking account? And if we're going to spend about a third of that $1 million of that one-time capital project budget, what other things do we have to fix in that building and related to capital projects for the fairgrounds? I did check, by the way, and I believe Jack Leong's changing the requested action was from some erroneous past error thing. So the request is actually for Carlson Roofing, who is the low parent low bidder, assuming they have all the items within that. But this is a bigger question is if we're going to do those improvements to that facility and the fairgrounds for other future ones, what do we have in our checking account? What commitments do we have for future items? What are those projections? Because we may not have just $1 million of expenses facing us. We may have 2 million or 3 million. But the point is to be able to look at it on a spreadsheet. I've asked for it, didn't receive it. And I'm asking you not to make action on this today until I can get more clarity and at least see what the numbers are. So you know what you have in your checkbook. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Moss, who's next?
Do I do this? Wipe it down.
Next, Madam Chair. We we did have Kelly Gilmore, but I do not see them on Zoom. So we will proceed to Kristin Lippapolt. So let me, Kristin, can you hear us?
Kristin, are you there? Are you still?
Hi, I'm here.
Great. We're ready for you.
Thank you. Good morning. Really appreciate the opportunity to speak to the commission today. My name is Kristin Leppert, and I'm a Washington County resident and program director for the Global Federation of Animal Sanctuaries. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of dozens of Washington County residents that have joined together to ask you to consider change to ordinance number 830, Chapter 6, Subchapter 8, which prohibits the keeping of exotic animals by expanding that prohibition to include circuses and other traveling wild animal shows. The current ordinance makes an exception for a temporary circus, carnival, or other similar traveling show if the exotic animal is kept for the primary purpose of entertainment. The current ordinance also does not include elephants, black bears, and cougars. In the last three years, not a single circus has come to Washington County. So making this change will cause zero financial impact. It's the right time to ensure that this ordinance fully reflects our county's humane values. Multnomah and Benton Counties have joined with nearly 200 municipalities in six states across the country in banning traveling wild animal shows. Animals in these shows are forced to endure extreme temperatures, lack of adequate food, isolation, and months on end in trucks or train cars. This amounts to wholesale deprivation of their natural lifestyle. These shows also present serious public safety concerns as well as wild animals are dangerous and unpredictable, especially after enduring years of stress caused by captivity, inhumane training practices, and a life on the road, which we all know is no life at all. Public safety and animal welfare are two issues that Washington County residents care deeply about, which is why we are asking for two modest updates to strengthen the ordinance. Under the definitions, please add elephants and include black bears in the definition of bears and cougars in the big cat section. Under exceptions, please remove line A2. We appreciate your work to consider these changes at the next work session and adopt the ordinance before the end of the year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kevin, do we have anyone else?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. And next up, we have Mr. Don Moore. Don, can you hear us?
Don, are you there?
You are on mute, Don.
How's this?
There you go.
Perfect.
Great. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. Thanks for the time today. I'm Don Moore, Director Emeritus of Your Oregon Zoo.
I thought I recognized that voice.
And I've asked for time today to support the requested change to Chapter 6.08 in Washington County Ordinance 830 prohibiting the keeping of exotic animals. The requested change to expand that prohibition to include traveling wild animal shows and circuses and to include elephants, black bears, and cougars not kept by modern accredited zoos like Oregon Zoo. During my career in modern zoos, we have strengthened accreditation standards for public and animal safety and for job one for these animals, our humane approach to their welfare. Elephants, bears, and big cats have been focal species for these priorities. And these are the priorities that I lean on today as I support the two requested updates to Chapter 6.08, which I consider just small changes. First, in definitions, I believe from long experience with large wild animals that are dangerous, that it's totally appropriate to add elephants, black bears, and cougars for public safety and also for animal welfare reasons. And second, in exceptions, the removal of traveling wild animal shows and circuses is appropriate for our modern culture and animal-loving constituents at this time. So I hope you give these requested changes serious consideration in the coming months. And thank you for your time today. I hope you stay safe and healthy out there. And Chair Harrington, I love your sash.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, and congratulations on your retirement. But I know that you will continue to be of service to all here in our country and animals throughout the world.
All right. Finally, Madam Chair, we have Mr. Dale Feek. Dale, can you hear us?
I can, Kevin. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Feek. Go ahead. And I also want to mention that we have received your multiple emails, including one of this morning at 4:15 titled Henckels and McCoy, California Fine Over Diesel Violation.
Thank you. I'm Dale Feek, Chair of and spokesperson for Washington County Citizen Action Network, a coalition of grassroots advocates dedicated to improving the quality of life in Washington County by promoting healthy and sustainable communities, social and economic justice, and open and responsive government, which you are. Madam Chair Catherine Harrington, Commissioner Jerry Willie, District Four Commissioner, my Commissioner and Commissioners, and to Steve Callaway, Mayor of Hillsborough. I'm making two public comments. One, I want to show our support of your accepting the $470,000 grant from the Department of Justice. The second comment is more extensive. It has to do with workers on East Main downtown Hillsborough between Second and Third Street not wearing masks and not social distancing. On November 2, 2020, while downtown on East Main between Second and Third Streets, I watched at least 10 workers working on a sidewalk project. All of them did not have facial coverings or masks, and they were they were many times standing right next to each other, talking or working. I never talked with any of them, but I read and wrote down the signage on two of the four trucks that had signage. One of them was H&amp;M, that's Henckels and McCoy. And I, in my email to you, I give more information. I do not know what government entity has jurisdiction over this work project, but please follow up on this flagrant violation of mask-wearing and disregard for social distancing. Even though the parking on the south side of the street was blocked, entrances to the stores were allowed. I entered Gembry Shoes, but before I did, I had to use their hand sanitizer in front of the door and wear a mask. The other was Integrity Traffic Oregon 15. I'm going to call Integrity Traffic and Henckels and ask for email address and forward this email to them. I believe they're addressing them directly. I want to thank you, Marnie Kyle, for saying to me in email that you were going to put them on the compliance list. Happy birthday, Commissioner Dick Scoughton. Have a good day and the rest of your life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Moss?
That completes this public comment period, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Well, then, Commissioners, that brings us to the consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of nine items, three under land use and transportation, one under county administrative office, one under Office of Community Development, four under Support Services, and one under Service District for Lighting. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Madam Chair, I will move for approval with the changes with one exception. I would like the Board to consider removing item G on the consent agenda for some discussion since we had a speaker who brought up some issues.
Okay, so we'll move that to the action items. So that will leave us with nine items on the consent agenda and three items under the action item.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I was notified by Director Roberts of Land Use and Transportation that item 2C on the resolution and order had an erroneous date stating November 17 instead of November 3. He wanted me to bring that to your attention and that they will work to get us a corrected copy for your approval.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a comment too. As Executive Director of Westside Economic Alliance, on item 2A, David Evans and Associates are a member of Westside Economic Alliance along with 250 other members. So just for the record. And I don't believe you have a second yet.
No. I will second the motion that was made by Commissioner Rogers.
So we have a motion and a second to adopt today's modified consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. So today we have three different presentations. The first one is a COVID-19 update with our Director of Health and Human Services, Marnie Kyle, who I will say has been helping us learn more about this new coronavirus, helping us organizationally address the various needs here throughout our community. So welcome once again. We often, you often express that you feel like you're the bearer of bad news because you're helping us be clear about the presence of the virus in our community, but that is not your fault.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Board. So we'll go ahead and we can go to the next slide. We'll start as usual with the numbers. And some of them, I know, you know, normally I wouldn't read slides, but for folks that are in virtual land and can't necessarily see. So as of yesterday, the Oregon numbers cumulative total is 45,978. Our statewide case rate has increased significantly, as I'm sure you anticipated watching the numbers this past week, to 1,085 cases per 100,000. We have had 692 deaths in the state of Oregon, and our seven-day average for new hospitalization has increased since the last time I reported to you. The new average is 12 daily hospitalizations. So the Washington County data, and you can see, last time I reported was October 26, and today is the 2nd of November. We now have total confirmed cumulative cases in Washington County of just over 6,000. Total presumptive cases is 240. Hospitalizations, like the rest of the state, we have had new hospitalizations is now 409. And unfortunately, three new deaths since the last time that I reported were up to 79. And one of the things that's really concerning is the number of outbreaks that our staff are responding to. You can see 22 from long-term care assisted living type facilities, two other congregate settings, 24 workplace settings, and 12 daycare schools and camps. So the number of outbreaks has also increased significantly. What I'm told from the public health leadership is that they've really seen, again, a shift in the number of cases going up that are household contacts or multiple family members from different households. So in addition to these workplace outbreaks, we are still seeing those social contact numbers going up. So this is the tri-county Phase 2 readiness indicators. And I really almost didn't want to show this to you today. So I think that one of the important things to recognize about this, because you see, especially in Washington County, a lot of green. And when I first looked at this, I'm like, how can this possibly be? Because I'm looking at record numbers since October 25. We've had record, several days with record numbers in Washington County as well as in the region and the state. Well, this is showing October 18 through the 24. And so we will have a new Phase 2 readiness indicator table beginning And so we will have a new Phase II readiness indicator table beginning tomorrow. And I would expect to see that many of these greens are probably going to be red. And I know I predicted that last week. I was a day off and forgetting how the weeks run together. Okay, so you've probably all heard about the new school metrics. The previous metrics, remember, were that we would have to get to 10 per 100,000 or lower in order to have onsite school at our public schools. And I know a lot of us in the metro area were looking at our school metrics over time and saying we're never going to get there, and it was very discouraging. And as you know, we've had research that shows that there's reduced transmission in children, and we know that there is a lot of concerns around opportunities for learning with many of our families that are BIPOC families, families that are low-income, single-parent families, where it's just really difficult to help and support your child when they're doing virtual learning. And so the state has really looked at all of that, because we also know that when there's decreased educational opportunities, that can have implications for lifelong health concerns. In public health, you all have heard this, we call that a social determinant of health. And so we're really concerned about education because it is a health indicator. So the public health staff has really worked with the Governor's Office, and we'd like to think that we influenced part of this change, which we think is a balance that is protecting students, teachers, and faculty, but also helping to get our kids back in school sooner and our parents able to go back to work. So what's changed is the timeframe of measurement. Now, it's that when we look at the case rates, we're looking at a measurement over two weeks instead of one-week periods. And then counties can return to onsite education with higher rates of positivity. So it's under 50 per 100,000 for onsite and between 50 and 100 per 100,000 for limited in-person K-6 grade onsite learning. So that's the good news. The more difficult news is that Washington County is in that orange transition level. And so we're not close to that. As you know, Beaverton had announced that they were not going to plan for in-person learning until February, and I think that the superintendents and the schools and principals, everybody's looking at that, because it still takes time to plan and turn these large ships so that we have quality and safe in-person learning when they are ready to go back. So we can go to the next slide, and it has the actual Washington County school metrics. And so you can see all of the school metrics. You can see that Clackamas County does qualify for that between 50 and 100 per 100,000. But Washington County and Multnomah County were quite a ways from being able to offer in-person learning at this point. Okay, so the other thing is the watch list. And when I was watching the numbers, I had to be reminded by the epidemiologist, because I was thinking, well, we are, and if you look at the school metrics, we're well above 50 per 100,000 cases. But the difference is, this is sporadic cases. So you'll remember that on the public health indicator metrics, one of the measures is that we want less than 30% of cases to not be traced to another case. So that's sporadic cases. And so this is looking at, to be on the watch list is when you have more than 50 per 100,000 sporadic cases. So that's the difference there. And you can see that we continue to be well below that metric. So Washington County at this point is not at risk of being on the watch list. So I wanted to share a little bit about, to sort of remind you, that public health is still out there every day doing work, because I give you a lot of numbers about cases and hospitalizations, and to remember that they're still doing contact tracing, and they're still supporting people in isolation and quarantine. So I have three quick examples. So through our quarantine support program, we have helped over 1,300 families since the beginning of the pandemic. And when I say "we," it's your public health staff that are Washington County employees, as well as our partners at the community-based organizations who we're supporting with funding and who OHA supports with funding. We've paid for housing, utility, and food assistance. And so I just wanted to give you a couple of real examples of some stories that we've had recently. So the first one, one of our families was previously homeless, and they had just had a baby. Prior to the COVID exposure, they were staying with relatives, but they were able to take advantage of the county respite shelter to safely quarantine without having to sort of couch surf through other relatives. Because of the financial assistance we provided the family, they were able to move into stable housing in October. The case manager reports that the mother was so grateful that she just couldn't stop saying, "Thank you." Another, the second one, another single mom who was struggling and behind bills since August. She had spent sleepless nights wondering how she would provide for her children and how she would pay rent and bills. With the help of our program and the additional one month of CARES funding, we were able to bring her up to date on her bills. She is one of 24 families that we've been able to help because of the additional funding that we've received. And then the last story is another woman that was helped with this funding actually had lost her partner to COVID, and she was struggling as a single young, as a parent to a young child. And again, we were able to provide her with rent, food, water, help with the electric bill, help with internet and phones so that her kids could continue to participate in school and garbage bills. She was so grateful for this help, and it relieved the stress and worry about paying the bills so that she was allowed some time to grieve the loss of her partner.
Touching people's lives. Thank you to you and the staff and all the staff members of the various community-based organizations for helping people get to stability, a healthy place in their life, and move forward.
Yeah. I just wanted to provide a little bit more context, because we go through the numbers so quickly every week. So these are the updated COVID, homeless COVID prevention updates. And you can see that the family promise, we've served 109 people to date. The number that I think is still the most important is that 72% have exited into stable housing. Hotel vouchers, we've served 49 people, and 50% of them have also exited into stable housing. And that's really the housing services, Annette and her team doing just an incredible job. The Safe Sleep Village, we have served 106 people to date. We continue to move because the early, really frigid cold, we've had beautiful sunny afternoons, but frigid cold mornings, below freezing many mornings. And so we are moving those folks into the respite shelter, into what we're calling the West Wing of the respite shelter, as well as indoor at the Cloverleaf facility. And then our Safe RV Parking, we have now served 35 people at the Safe RV Village. And soon, November 15, I'll be able to report that we have opened the winter shelters for folks that need those services. So the respite shelter, we are currently housing 30 people, and six are on the, what we're calling COVID-impacted. So these are people that are in isolation, quarantine, or have had positive test results. And then the Safe Sleep West Wing, which is the folks that were from the Safe Sleeping Village. And then we also have 11 people that really were not doing well either in their cars or RVs or other places that had been moved into there. So for a total of 36. Yep, next. Okay. Childcare and school-age learning, you heard a little bit about this in the work session this morning. So to date, we have received 600, or 600, 263 applications have been completed, 291 awards, and they have allocated $2.91 million for increasing access to childcare supports. And then you also heard this morning about the school district early learning support programs. All of the school districts have signed IGAs and are participating. As I've reported in the past, most are doing a hybrid onsite and reimbursing families for learning support programs. And then we're also working, you heard a little bit about this, this morning, we're working with county administration to extend this childcare learning support into 2021. And this is my new ending slide, just to remind folks that it's a little bit scary when we see these numbers going up, and we hear about more hospitalizations and more deaths locally at the state and federally. But we really can make a difference as individuals, each and every one of us, by getting that flu shot now, wearing your face covering whenever you're indoors, in public, or even outdoors if you cannot consistently maintain that six-foot of distance, frequent hand washing. And we're asking, we know that it's coming up on a really, really difficult time, to ask people to limit their social gatherings. And limiting your social gatherings unfortunately includes large family gatherings with people that aren't in your immediate household. So please think about the number of people that you're gathering with. And I know, I know this is incredibly difficult to ask people to do right now with holidays coming up, but if you are going to gather, to really think about the space, think about wearing masks, even in your homes, think about doing it outdoors if we have a lovely sunny day like we have had, spotty sunny days here and there. But that will help us move towards being able to reopen and really gather with our family the way that we want and the way that we're used to. So, and that is what I have, unless there are any questions.
Commissioners, any questions, thoughts, encouragement, good ideas?
Bring back great news next time.
Thank you for keeping us informed. Marnie, you always do a good job. And like we've said, what's important is that we know where we are, we can take the appropriate actions. So this is about the reality, not about how we wish it was. So don't, please don't worry about bringing bad news.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I thought it was interesting yesterday in the presentation when they talked about the lead time that the schools need to make this transition and to be able to anticipate that. That's why, as much as we'd like to see it different, it's probably going to be February before those schools can go back to in-person learning, which is unfortunate. The question that I would have is, this is flu season. So how do, how do we in our accounts differentiate between someone who has just got the flu versus someone who has the COVID?
Sure. So oftentimes, you're not going to be able to differentiate and likely would need to have testing done for both influenza and for COVID, because the symptoms, both for influenza as well as COVID, can be really mild in the beginning. Sometimes it's hard to differentiate between a cold and COVID or allergies and COVID, because some people can have mild symptoms that can progress to something really severe, and the same thing with influenza. You can start with some mild symptoms. I think if you're having severe symptoms, if you have consistent fever, we really are asking people, you know, stay home, don't go out, don't go to friends and families, don't come to work. If you have severe symptoms, especially if you have shortness of breath or difficulty breathing, you need to be seen by a healthcare provider. You need to call your healthcare provider. They probably won't be able to tell over the phone whether it's influenza or COVID.
But there is, as you defined there, there is, there is kind of different symptoms where you might think you just have the flu initially that actually develop different symptoms that should, you should be, I guess, forewarned on that you may have moved from just a flu to actually having COVID. So is that, did I describe that correctly so we can tell the difference?
Not necessarily, because influenza can also lead to severe illness and hospitalization. It can also lead to pneumonia. And so I think that if you have severe symptoms, you should see your healthcare provider, because it doesn't matter whether it's influenza or whether it's COVID, if you're having severe symptoms, if you're having difficulty breathing, shortness of breath, prolonged fever, you should contact your healthcare provider and not try to distinguish, you know, which it is. Influenza doesn't, doesn't lead to hospitalization and death as often as COVID can, but both can lead to very severe illness.
Yeah, good point.
Yeah, in the past, we've had somewhere in the neighborhood of 36,000 people die every year of influenza or higher. So COVID's much higher, but...
You mentioned the sort of extended family gatherings. Well, we've got Thanksgiving and Christmas coming. How are we going to address these, what are very special times normally for people, family gatherings?
Yeah, it's very difficult. I know even personally, I had planned to visit my parents this year, and I'm not going to do that because I'm worried about exposing them and having a large family gathering. So, you know, I think some of the things that people can do is to have a virtual family time together. People have gotten really creative in ways to reach out and connect with their family. You know, even some people are setting up videos, kind of like a Zoom video at their dining room table. So I think, you know, folks are getting really creative, and the Oregon Health Authority has given some good tips that are just not coming right off the top of my head, but we can sure bring those next time so people can start thinking about Thanksgiving and Christmas gatherings.
I know you know what we need to be doing, but how are we going to get that message across?
Right.
Especially in light of the fact that we're not doing as well as we should be, and the trend is not good, so...
Yeah. I think there's a lot of effort through media, through social media, to get out the message and through our community-based organizations and faith-based organizations who are really working to get the word out about the importance of avoiding social gatherings, including multiple household family gatherings.
So towards that end, the state is doing another public campaign, and they're, just like with the most recent round that they did, in that round, they were trying to target younger adults. So they used social media platforms that were more appropriate. So they were platforms... So they were platforms that I don't frequent because I'm not in the 18 to 29-year-old age bracket, much as I might wish. So there, there is that effort going on. If I, and I want to encourage folks to subscribe to that daily OHA email that comes because they, OHA had tremendous ideas for how to have a good Halloween celebration. And I have found those tips really helpful for stretching my imagination. Back on the school metrics, Commissioner Rogers, you had asked when we were dealing with the first round of metrics with the ready schools, safe schools, information back in July and August, you know, how was that information developed? And then the information was developed learning from international experiences. Well, since August, there have been places in the United States that have opened for in-classroom learning as well as some smaller group learnings here in Oregon. So this latest round of, of metrics and version four of that guideline from the Oregon Department of Education has leveraged that information. Those slides are available on both the Oregon Department of Education, ODE, and OHA website for all to learn from. What is very clear is that school districts have to meet state metrics and requirements. Then from there, the school districts are the decision makers in consultancy with our public health, our local public health authority here, so Marnie and her team. So if any parent or business has a question about what the status is for school districts, ODE and OHA will have charts available and our sure, I'm sure our team will help us all navigate to them easily. But the decision-making is at the school district level and not by the Board of Commissioners. And lastly, I would like to share, I appreciated Vice Chair Commissioner Scouton for getting us started with our meeting earlier as I stepped out and participated in a phone meeting with Governor Brown and her team with the other two tri-county chairs. We were making the case that we recognize we're at a critical juncture and we really need to have the opportunity for our local public health experts to better collaborate with our state experts to really examine different strategies for how we navigate through the extensive community spread that is here. We have to move away from just asking our community the same thing and expecting different results. Though the techniques that Marnie and her team and the state are telling us to use, wearing masks all the time, period, sanitizing, washing hands, practicing that physical distancing all the time, does make a difference. You can and will save lives, lives, as well as hardship to others if you take individual responsibility. And it's really that all the way through the holidays. We can continue to have a joyful holiday season, but we need to do so differently this year. It's so absolutely vital. So the state and Governor Brown are committed to really engage with our team actively over these next couple of weeks so that we can chart a course differently than we're in today. So I want to thank you, Marnie, Tricia, your epidemiologists in advance for the heavy engagement that is coming over these next couple of weeks. And hopefully will culminate in some clear recommendations between the two teams in our next call on November 19th. Any last comments before we move on?
No, great work, but at some point you should tell our business community as well that we're very conscious of their issues and that we've come up with a 1A proposal and that wasn't mentioned today, but we're way over. So maybe at another meeting you can share that so people can understand that there's a lot more going on.
We continue to practice the art of the possible. Thank you, Marnie, keep up the good work. Alrighty, the next presentation on the menu today, the agenda is from Clean Water Services. And without, I'm not going to announce it, I'll leave that to our Clean Water Services team to take it from here. Mark Jockers and Nate Cohen. Nate is our Managing Director of Water Resource Recovery Operations and Services because all water is recycled water.
Thank you very much and good morning Chair Harrington and the board. I do have a few other staff I would like to be able to have come up and be recognized. So. Come right up here. Yeah, if you could stand over there, perfect. So we have several staff here. And first of all is Tom Stowe, who is the Superintendent of the Rock Creek Treatment Plant. Next to him is CJ Baxter, who is the Superintendent of the Hillsborough and Forest Grove Facilities. Next is Noah Harvey, he's the Operations Supervisor at the Durham Facility. And then Jared Kinnear is our Reuse Program Manager. Want to be able to have them introduced here. Very happy to be here. This is my favorite meeting of the year to come to the board. And the reason is, it's always a great honor to present to you the Performance Excellence Awards that we receive from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. The Hillsborough and Durham plants received gold awards and they did that for having zero permit violations all year. Rock Creek and Forest Grove received platinum awards for 16 years and 18 years of perfect compliance respectively. As proud as I am that we earned these awards, even better for me is the opportunity to recognize this staff and particularly the ones that are leading the treatment plants and who are responsible for this achievement. Because this is a 24/7, 365 days a year accomplishment. And there are none that know better than Tom and CJ and Noah because they're the ones that are leading this effort day in and day out. And they're also the ones who get after our calls and occasionally get woken up in the middle of the night to deal with all kinds of unexpected occurrences to keep us in permit compliance. Yet one more thing about them, that they will be the first ones to tell you, they share the credit. It's not just these three and it's not just Jared, it is a, it's all the staff at the treatment plants, it's all the support groups within the Water Resource Recovery Department and the rest of the district, it's senior management, and it's you, the board. So it is truly a team effort, something for all of us to really be proud of and to celebrate. So thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm going to touch on our next piece, Chair and members of the board. The other opportunity we wanted to be here today, and I want to thank Nate for that presentation, he's right on, it's really about all of us. The other presentation we wanted to acknowledge today is the Utility of the Future Today Acknowledgement, an award that Clean Water Services recently received. We received this during the Water Environment Federation Technical Exhibit and Conference that the board participated in virtually. We received the 2020 Award in recognition of the district's leadership in water reuse, which is one of the reasons why we're happy to have Jared Kinnear here, who is our Reuse Program Manager, who's showing this flag that we received as a result of that. Clean Water Services was one of 65 utilities in the United States were recognized for this award. And it is just the second utility, it's just one of two utilities in the U.S. that have received this reward, award for five consecutive years. Previously, we were recognized for our leadership in energy efficiency and generation, nutrient reduction and materials recovery, partnering and engagement, and in watershed stewardship. This year's recognition is for water reuse and it's a recognition for the reuse program. We have the largest reuse program in the state right now. Done some very creative things in terms of the Pure Water Brew effort and community education, as well as looking at landscape scale level environmental restoration that we might be able to do with reused water here in this basin. So with that, I wanted to share that award with you. I know some of you may have watched the award ceremony virtually that we sent that link to you on, but we wanted to acknowledge it here today. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much to the team. We know loud and clear that this is an internationally and nationally recognized organization. We appreciate all of your efforts in normal, normal year operations, but as well as this year particularly. You've got a tremendous track record and you just keep going. Thank you for all of your service to our communities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next, we'll be moving on to our first proclamation. This one to recognize Native American Heritage Month. As far as we can determine here in Washington County, this is our county's first ever proclamation in honor of Native American Heritage Month. Although we've taken great care to do no harm by consulting with members of our Native American community for this important milestone, we ask for forgiveness for any mistakes made along the way as we seek to learn and to do better in the future. As a learning organization with a diverse workforce, I want to extend my appreciation for our Washington County staff who have helped to plan this proclamation and the associated learning opportunities we have set up for us throughout this next month. And with that, I welcome Sherri Kirk up.
Tansay and good morning Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. For the record, my name is Sherri Kirk. I am Métis, which is one of three groups of indigenous peoples in Canada. I work at the Auditorate's Office as a Senior Management Auditor. As a first step in creating a respectful space for this occasion, we are honored to have with us today Elder Celeste White, White, excuse me, I apologize, Celeste White Wolf to offer a blessing before we proceed. And immediately after the blessing, Harmony Paul will be our drummer singer. Ms. Paul is a Native American drummer with the Four Directions Drum Group located in Portland. Her tribes are Nez Perce, Cowalts, Flathead, and Yakima.
Thank you, Ms. Kirk.
My name is Okatala Katsa. I, on my mother's side, I'm Caius and Nez Perce. My name comes from one of the people of the Old Joseph Band. Okatala Katsa and her son White Wolf were part of the Nez Perce Wolauwa Band, chased through this Montana. They eventually were taken as prisoners of war and held in Kansas and Oklahoma. They returned eventually to the Yumitilla Reservation, a descent from the Wolauwa Band. On my father's side, I'm Hawaiian, I don't know if that means, Hawaiian, Italian, Swiss, Greek, Nez Buaui, Hid River, and Koru. And I say this to you because I ask you to recognize the people of this land and that the people of this land are people made up of a lot of smaller tribes. Also that we, as Indian people, were not settler in our places, we did travel. So the Caius came over to this area, the Waspoles, the Columbia River people, the people from the ocean came here. So there were a lot of people recognized, this area as part of their historical gathering and hunting areas. I also, thank you, I thought I was using my longhouse voice. I also would like you to encourage and assist us to all of the various issues that you have brought forward and I appreciate the work that you're doing. You have a lot of these little details that you have to think about all the time. I ask you to add to your list of details, reaching out to the people of today who are in this area. There are a lot of different tribes in the metropolitan area, there are a lot of different people represented here. One of the things I, I'd like you to think, consider is, is naming some of the places that you have here after the people of this land. I understand there's some buildings being built, there's some rooms that might still need names, that one man, is he still here? One of your Choyapo people told me about that. So I ask you to consider involving the Niti people here. Finally, as a part of the history of this area, Forest Grove was the first place where Indian children were taken and schooled at Forest Grove. My great-grandfather, Peter Colama, from Nez Buaui, was there and he met his wife Lily, my grandparents. So I ask you to select, look at that history too, how Forest Grove could be brought back and remembered as where the Indians were first taken from their parents and educated there. My mother was also one of those educated later on at Chamoa. So their impact of the treatment by the non-Indians has been somewhat very devastating because we've lost our language, we've lost some of our ways, but we are still here. We will still be, be here for many, many years. And I thank you for the honor of being able to say a little prayer for you, give you the strength to continue what you're doing and to also give strength to others. So now on to my prayer and I ask that, I do this for the whole community, not just the policymakers, but the whole community. I ask that, yes, please stand. Thank you Creator for bringing these wise people together in this place of learning and sharing, in this place where we help one another, we don't hurt one another. In this place where we recognize the goals of one person can also be the goals of a community. Thank you Creator and take care of all of those who have been hit by this horrible disease. Thank you Creator for helping to bring the people who share their kindness with those who are, who are hurting, with those who are, have lost loved ones. Thank you Creator for bringing this group of people together and may these people continue to work together so that they help protect this community, whether this community is Indian, non-Indian, brown, black, green, red, blue, or whatever color we decide we want to be today. Thank you Creator for bringing us all together and sharing this world and we hope to make a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Aye. When you, when you're a native person, I'm going to teach you something. When you're a native person and you have a person that says words that you appreciate, you should say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you.
Inala is Okatenoma. My name is Kenoma. Hello, everybody, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be doing the honor song for after the prayer, it's a custom for us to do an honor song right after a prayer or before. And we also stand during the call.
We'll, we'll set one of you up at this table here as well, and one of you at that microphone as well. Thank you for joining us.
Whereas Washington County is committed to creating an inclusive community that celebrates diversity and ensures all residents have equitable opportunities to lead healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable lives. And whereas, in honoring the cultures, traditions, and accomplishments of Native Americans that have shaped our country, we also acknowledge our nation's history of colonialism that has inflicted discrimination, deprivation, violence, and genocide upon indigenous people. And whereas, the area currently known as Washington County, Oregon rests on land that was first inhabited by the Ophalati Kalapuians, also called the Tualitun people, who flourished here for thousands of years.
And whereas, settlers began arriving when Wapato became Washington County in the 1830s, to take on from the Ophalati that was not created nor paid for until 1855 under the Willamette Valley Treaty. And whereas, the Ophalati signed
An 1851 treaty with the United States which never ratified and in 1855, signed on to the Willamette Valley Treaty with many other tribes, which was ratified ceding all of their land to the United States in exchange for a permanent reservation, supplies, and services. And whereas, the Ophalati owned Wapato Lake in Washington County previous to their removal, and the lake was drained to make farmland, destroying the vast Wapato Field, which were principal resources to the Ophalati people for thousands of years.
And whereas, Ophalati were removed to the Grand Ron Indian Reservation in 1856, where they were treated badly by the United States government and Indian agents, being denied land, adequate food, medicines, and services for nearly 20 years, causing many Native people to live in poverty and to suffer untimely deaths. And whereas, the first off-reservation Indian boarding school in Oregon was established in Forest Grove, and many Native students from area reservations were removed from their families and sent there, forced to stop speaking their languages and to assimilate away from their native culture, causing generations of trauma and disassociation from their culture and community. And whereas, the Grand Ron Indian Reservation was terminated by the United States Congress in 1954 in public law 588, causing the displacement and disenfranchisement of thousands of Native peoples of Oregon, including the Ophalati peoples, who were then forced to leave the former reservation, causing further loss of Native languages and culture.
And whereas, the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron Community of Oregon was restored in 1983 under public law 98-165, with the Ophalati people as members, beginning the process of restoring the tribe, community, and culture of the tribal nation. And whereas, the Ophalati people endured to this day as members of the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron Community of Oregon, having survived catastrophic diseases, losses of their ancestral land, forced relocation to a reservation, long-term mismanagement of the reservation, family separation through the removal of children to boarding schools, and termination. And whereas, after overcoming numerous setbacks over the years to regain treaty-acquired land and federal recognition as a sovereign, sovereign nation, the Confederate Tribes of the Grand Ron Community have established a successful government to serve the needs of their members, and also generously support the advancement of underserved communities throughout Northwest Oregon. And whereas, we seek to repair the trauma of past oppression and broken trust, both locally and regionally, by lifting up indigenous cultures and voices, and striving together to build a future of shared hope and promises for all.
Now therefore be it resolved that on this third day of November 2020, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 2020 as American, Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures of indigenous people, to raise awareness about our shared history, and acknowledge the important contributions that Native Americans have made to our community and our nation.
And before you get up, Commissioners, might we entertain a motion to adopt this proclamation as read?
A move, Madam Chair.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting this proclamation in honor of Native American Heritage Month, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you very much for joining us today. That was Jenny Sanchez, as well as Ayla Smith.
Thank you Jenny and Ella. I just want to say, want to invite everyone up for a photo opportunity with the Board of Commissioners who's participated in today's proclamation activities. I also want to remind all Washington County employees that Dr. Lewis will be having his presentation via Zoom. You can access through the, that, through the internet, has that posted. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, before we take a photo, are there any remarks you'd like to share?
I'd like to say thank you for this presentation. Thank you for the blessing. Thank you for the song. It was very moving and served as, one more time for me to reflect on the importance of this proclamation. So, thank you very much.
And to reflect on all the wrongs that have been done.
Yeah.
And I hope those could never be apologized for adequately.
I appreciate how elders and young Native Americans have been teaching me how to be more respectful of traditions from time immemorial, to think as an elected official, out at least six generations as we make decisions that impact life, not only here today and for tomorrow, but out those future generations. We are honored to have you join us today and to help guide us through doing things in a more respectful and appropriate manner. And with that, if we might have the opportunity, if you're interested in joining us in some photos. Good. We have some professionals with cameras. We're trying to do this with some good social distancing, though we do know we have masks on.
Sounds like me.
to raise awareness about our shared history and acknowledge the important contributions that Native Americans have made to our community and our nation.
And before you get up, Commissioners, might we entertain a motion to adopt this proclamation as read?
I move, Madam Chair.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adopting this proclamation in honor of Native American Heritage Month, please do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you very much for joining us today. That was Jenny Sanchez, as well as Ella Smith.
Thank you Jenny and Ella. I just want to say, want to invite everyone up for a photo opportunity with the Board of Commissioners who's participated in today's proclamation activities. I also want to remind all Washington County employees that Dr. Lewis will be having his presentation via Zoom. You can access through the, that through the Internet, has that posted. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, before we take a photo, are there any remarks you'd like to share?
I'd like to say thank you for this presentation. Thank you for the blessing. Thank you for the song. It was very moving and served as one more time for me to reflect on the importance of this proclamation. So, thank you very much.
And to reflect on all the wrongs that have been done.
Yeah.
And I hope those could never be apologized for adequately.
I appreciate how elders and young Native Americans have been teaching me how to be more respectful of traditions from time immemorial, to think as an elected official, out at least six generations as we make decisions that impact life not only here today and for tomorrow, but out those future generations. We are honored to have you join us today and to help guide us through doing things in a more respectful and appropriate manner. And with that, if we might have the opportunity, if you're interested in joining us in some photos. Good. We have some professionals with cameras. We're trying to do this with some good social distancing, though we do know we have masks on.
Sounds like me.
Thank you for that from all of our community members. We do have another proclamation today related to housing service to proclaim November 15th to 22nd as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And we have Annette Evans here with us today. Hello, Ms. Evans. Thank you for the work that you do selflessly, you and your team, every single day.
Thank you, and good morning to Harrington and Commissioners. National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is an opportunity to draw attention to food disparities and housing insecurity experienced by members of our community. A lack of adequate food and proper nutrition can lead to devastating impact of malnutrition on homeless youth and disadvantaged children in our, in our community. The pain of hunger is real. While the need is great, our community is responding to provide shelter, food, and services to those in need. We recognize the work and commitment of all our faith-based and nonprofit food pantries that feed the hunger and houseless. The Oregon Food Bank is an integral partner in providing cultural responsive food to our houseless shelters and day center providers. We could not do this work without their support. Last week, Washington County Housing launched a campaign inviting county employees to raise $5,000 for the Oregon Food Bank during the month of November. In our first week of the campaign, I learned today that employees have donated over $1,000 to date, and we still have three and a half weeks to go. This will provide, as of the $1,000 this morning, over 3,000 meals to those in need. I would like to invite Ms. Catherine Cook-Nick to share a few words regarding the work of the Oregon Food Bank.
Hi there.
Hi. It is such an honor to be here today, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak and share my gratitude for the work that you all do to raise awareness about hunger and homelessness in Washington County. And here at Oregon Food Bank, we believe that food is a basic human right. We envision resilient communities throughout Oregon and Southwest Washington that never go hungry. Hunger is not an empty stomach or an individual experience. It is a community-wide symptom of exclusion, of not having enough, not having enough nutritious food, not enough income, enough power, enough representative voice. And hunger is a symptom of barriers to employment, education, housing, and healthcare. So, a year ago, Oregon had a decrease in hunger. And now, due to the ongoing pandemic, recent wildfires, associated economic disruption, and insufficient public safety nets, hunger is at the highest level it is in over a century. Before the pandemic, close to 1 million community members relied on the Oregon Food Bank Network for food assistance in one year. Today, estimates from the Oregon State University show that the number of Oregonians experiencing or likely to soon experience food insecurity has doubled. This means as many, one in four Oregonians are turning to local food pantries, many for the first time. But in the midst of crisis and community coming together, as businesses shuttered and schools closed in mid-March, individuals and organizations immediately jumped into action. People of all ages, identities, and expertise rallied around communities to raise resources to support the fight against hunger. Because of our community's support, Hunger Relief Pantries and partners across the state have been able to set up, meet the drastically increased need. And almost overnight, agencies had to pivot to accommodate social distancing and meet the increased need for food assistance. We all experience the effects of hunger in our communities, but together we can build communities that never go hungry. We can build communities where every voice matters, and we can build communities that share responsibility for each other and the common good. Because when we share prosperity, we all benefit. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for your support and your work in Washington County. We are so grateful for all you do in this fight against hunger, and thank you for this time today.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Mr. Moss, who's reading our proclamation today?
I will take care of that for you, Madam Chair. Proclamation, Board of Commissioners for Washington County, National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 15th through the 22nd, 2020. Whereas the National Coalition for the Homeless and National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month. And whereas, the Washington County Board of Commissioners recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for individuals and family. And whereas, communities can engage in efforts to encourage support for homeless assistance services providers, as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organization. And whereas, there are many organizations committed, committed to sheltering and providing supportive services, as well as meals, food, and supplies to people experiencing homelessness. And whereas, the purpose of the proclamation is to inform and educate the public about local hunger and homelessness. And whereas, Washington County is helping lead the effort with the Oregon Food Bank to raise $5,000 to provide 15,000 meals for hungry and homelessness residents in our community in the month of November. Therefore, be it resolved that on this third day of November 2020, Washington County Board of Commissioners has hereby requested our resident's support efforts to collect funds to provide food for the hungry and homelessness in our community during the month of November 2020, and hereby proclaim the week of November 15th through 22nd, 2020 as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Be it further resolved that we, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, encourage all citizens to recognize those people who do not have housing and need support from citizens and private, public, nonprofit service entities, signed to stay by Chair Catherine Harrington and Recording Secretary.
Quick question for either Ms. Angie or Ms. Evans. You mentioned that we're hoping, as an agency, to have our employees donate $5,000 this month. For those employees who have Internet connections here, as employees, I'm sure there's information on horizons to fulfill that. For those employees who do not have Washington County email addresses, what provisions have we set up for them?
It will be communication through their supervisors. This is just a communication challenge we have at the county, so I appreciate you raising that, Chair Harrington.
Alrighty. Thank you. Any questions, comments, or what are the wishes of the board?
I move that we proclaim November 15th to 22nd, National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and look forward to making some progress and returning to where we were a year ago.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously five to zero. And Catherine, for the Oregon Food Bank, what would your website address be?
We are at www.organfoodbank.org, and we have set up an online fundraising portal specifically for Washington County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Keep up the good work, and thank you for staying healthy.
Thank you all.
With that, Madam Chair, we will return to our presentations and our last one for Land Use and Transportation from Mr. Roberts.
Good morning, Commissioners. I, I'm just going to introduce Scott Linfestie, who's our building official, and we're here today to recognize Derek Moon, one of our plan reviews, our Plan Review Supervisor, as Oregon Building Officials Supervisor of the Year. So with that, I'll turn it over to Scott.
My pleasure this day to be here to recognize Derek Moon and his accomplishments that he has brought to our group, the Building Services Team. Derek falls in line with several others who have been here, Washington County, in the past four years that have been recognized by the Oregon Building Officials Association. These awards are recognized statewide, and in the past, we have had Building Official of the Year, Permit Technician of the Year, Inspector of the Year, and now Supervisor of the Year. These are very important awards to those that serve the communities in our state through building services, through the permitting, and the plan review, and the inspections of, to bring about safe buildings within our communities. Typically, we would have the past president of the Oregon Building Officials Association here to present this award, but with our current circumstances, he's unable to be here in person. We do have a video Zoom meeting where Ted Zuck, who is the past president of Oregon Building Officials Association, will be presenting this award to Derek today.
My name is Ted Zuck, and I'm the immediate past president of Oregon Building Officials Association. I can tell you these certain times with great pleasure and honor to inform the Washington County Board of Commissioners that one of Washington County's own, Derek Moon, has received the OBOA Supervisor of the Year Award. OBOA has a membership of over 1,100 members, including building officials, inspectors, plan reviewers, and permit tech staff. This recognition and award was bestowed upon Derek at our annual business meeting, which was held in August. He was nominated from our membership at large, not just Washington County. I'd like to read to you what the nominating members wrote about Derek, which shows the admiration for and leadership qualities he possesses, as expressed by his own peers. Quote, "I am nominating Derek Moon for Supervisor of the Year. Over the past year, Derek Moon has been instrumental as a supervisor to the plan review team here at Washington County. He possesses all the qualities of a great leader. His understanding shows great integrity, has excellent communication skills, and can delegate efficiently and properly. The COVID-19 pandemic has been a challenging time for many, and at the start of this period, many building departments and jurisdictions were unsure of how to handle the situation. However, thanks to Derek, the Washington County Plan Review Team was able to continue running smoothly without much change. Derek was able to navigate his team by expanding on existing resources, such as electronic plan review system. He had worked diligently to make the transition from paper to electronic as seamless as possible to prevent any delays in our plan review timeline. In fact, this change has made our plan review team much more efficient. Derek has also coordinated with other supervisors of various departments to ensure that building permits can continue to be issued. Please consider Derek Moon for this award, as his tireless effort, work ethic, and skills should not go unnoticed are underappreciated. Derek Moon is highly respected within this department, and he continuously excelled in his supervisory position since obtaining it." So, what I'd like to say, as part of our nominating and vetting process, the OBOA Board falls up on all nominations, and Derek got glowing reviews from everybody that we spoke to. Derek is our colleague, but he's a shining example of public service in Washington County, and congratulations, Derek. Thank you for your service.
Well, Derek, you are very well thought of, not only here in Washington County and our team, but also across our great state. Would you give us the honor of telling us a little bit about your career here?
Wow, I wasn't expecting that. I've been at Washington County now for about 14 years. I started out as an inspector, went to plans examiner, then I went to work for Andy Beck in long-range planning for a little bit. Then I got to come back to be a plans examiner again, and kind of moved up the chain to became supervisor. I started out my construction background as an electrician. And then, as you get older, parts break, so you have to find something else to do. So that's what led me to the county. So I'm grateful for the opportunity that county has given me to expand my career.
And I would like to just add too, Derek, Derek is tenacious. He was one of our employees during the last recession that, as we needed to reduce positions, Derek went to Health and Human Services, Department of Aging and Veteran Services, I believe, for a couple of years, and then spent some time in long-range planning, in both of those roles, I think, as administrative specialist, and eventually was able to make his way back into LUT, into building services. And I have to say, has, has been a tremendous asset for us, getting us through a number of large, complex projects, but also just doing a great job on all the day-to-day work that happens within that, in that group. So we are very lucky to have Derek with us.
Well, and the electronic plan review, we, we had a presentation on that as a board, and we know that that was no small task, and does provide for 21st century efficiency for our building customers, but also in the work that all of you do, to, to provide for us what we take for granted, that as new buildings are built, they are done so to code so that we can all use them for decades ahead. Thank you so much for being a valued employee and a supervisor here at Washington County.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Might you do the, us in honor of taking a, having a picture taken with your plaque, and we can provide that back to, to the OBOA organization as well?
You go ahead and file out here. We're getting more efficient.
Yes, we are.
I still rarely get to tell you what to do. Swap with Commissioner Treese, because otherwise I can't see.
We need some gender balance.
We do. Okay. Sure, that would be, that would be good, or Chair Harrington, approach for the gender balance thing. Right in between Stephen and Commissioner Willie. There you go. You guys are beautiful.
Wonderful. Thank you for demonstrating career flexibility and tenure. More lifelong learnings.
Apparently so. I think we're going to miss some of all of it. I don't think I quite realize how much of the afternoons I'm going to have to miss.
Alrighty. So, here we are. We're about halfway through our agenda. We have one public hearing, three, I think, short but swift action items, and a couple of other normal agenda items before the end of our meeting today. Thank you for everyone's patience. Next, we'll move on to public hearings. We have one public hearing today to approve the resolution and order to amend Washington County Personnel Rules and Regulations. And we have both Jack Leong, our Director of Support Services, and Eva Labonte, Assistant Director of Support Services, here with us.
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington.
Push the button, is it green?
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington. It's working now. So, thank you very much for your time this afternoon. As you mentioned, Eva Labonte, Assistant Director of Support Services, as well as county's chief HR officer, is with me today to present recommended amendments to the Washington County Personnel Rules and Regulation. The Washington County Personnel Rules and Regulation is our primary document that sets the county's standard on our personnel regulations. And then, we go through the review and periodically, and recommend revisions to stay on top of the current trend and the best practice in HR. So Eva will walk us through with this recommended changes. I'll hand it off to Eva.
Thanks, Jack. Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. It's quite an honor, actually, to speak after those fantastic presentations and proclamations, so it was wonderful to see those. So today, we are here to talk about some of the changes we're proposing for the personnel rules in the public hearing. I'm going to go over some of them briefly, and then I have a presentation with slideshow on the pay equity portion of this, which is the largest portion of the personnel rules that we're changing. We do have some definition changes and updates. We have made those in relation to the pay equity changes that we're making, just to make it more clear for our employees what exactly we mean. We may have terms like reclassification, redeployment, those can get kind of confusing, so we're trying to use just more straightforward language and make them clearer for our employees to understand what those terms mean. We've also increased our time for higher-class pay without needing CAO approval from 120 days to 180 days. This is because a lot of times, we have people in higher-class positions while we're filling spots, or we're making sure that we have the right staffing model, and oftentimes, we need a little bit extra time for that, so we're asking for an extension to 180 days on that piece. We have added some language in Section 12 for our equal-opportunity employer portion of our personnel rules. We also have some just minor spelling, grammatical changes. We have two title changes that affect the personnel rules in a number of places. One is moving from Human Resources Manager to change the title to Chief Human Resources Officer, and the other change is the Deputy Medical Examiner to Medical Legal Death Investigator, that's referred to several times in the personnel rules. So we've made those changes. And then we have just, you know, numbering changes, page changes, as you make changes to the personnel rules, you just need to update the index and things like that. So now, I'm going to go back to the pay equity portion of the changes in the personnel rules. And as I said, these are mostly because, why we're here today, is these pay equity changes. So, pay equity, next slide, please. So, pay equity is a law that went into effect in 2017, took effect January 1st, 2019. So, I think it's good to go over what pay equity is and what it means for our organization. So, what it's saying is that every worker must receive equal pay for equal work, and the basis of this is to make sure it's regardless of race, gender, age, any kind of protected characteristics. And the way this can be modified is through bona fide factors, and that's a very legal term, but so I'll describe what that means. So you can offer different pay when you're basing it on seniority system or a merit system. And this is how our employees do get pay increases after they're already an employee. So, our typical scenario is after a year of employment, or each year after you're employed, which is the seniority portion. Then there is a performance evaluation that's done by supervisor and manager, and that is the merit part, to ensure that employees have met the standards for their position. And those who are either in collective bargaining units or on a step system, they get the next step in their pay increase. Those who are exempt employees, or MAPS employees, then have a percentage that's given to them based on the merit. So we use both a combination of seniority and merit for our employees who are currently employed to ensure that they have equitable pay increases. Workplace location and travel can be used, and it is occasionally around the county, but I wanted to focus on the last one, which is how we evaluate incoming employees now to make sure they're starting at the equitable pay salary for them, which is based on education, training, and experience. We have a very detailed and objective salary matrix form that we use for every person coming in, every person getting promoted who is already an employee, that goes through and evaluates exactly where they're at with their experience, education, and training versus what the qualifications are for the job they're being hired for. This creates a very equitable situation where it's not about any other factor besides those very specific pieces. So, I'll pause there. Are there any questions?
So, I'm really glad you're making this presentation today, because as I read the packet on Friday with just the rules and regulations, this was not a... this was not at all clear to me. So thank you for adding this in. One of the things that I have learned in my prior tenure as a Metro Counselor around pay equity and also equality, excuse me, pay equality and equity, is allowing for equivalent experience, not only in hiring, but also in matriculating through the salary scale. So I want to make sure that certainly as we go through the hiring process, that we are following through on equivalent experience. Otherwise, if we're looking for a very narrow, specific experience, then we're always going to get the same white privilege experience in our workforce.
Thank you for that comment. We have been, over the last two years, modifying our minimum qualifications for positions. It's sort of what we call an or-or schedule. So for example, you have a college degree and two years' experience, or an associate's degree and four years' experience, or six years of experience in the field. This is much more equitable. It allows for much more people from different backgrounds to come in and apply for our jobs and be qualified. So we're making sure that we're making those changes. And we have a much broader sense of when we're looking for experience, you know, or-related experience, that type of thing. So we're really trying to broaden our minimum qualifications to allow more people to be qualified and apply. It's one great way of helping our pool of candidates be more diverse and inclusive.
And not just the experience, but the range of acceptable degrees?
Yes, and yes, we broaden that quite a bit. So it's or-related, you know.
Thank you, thank you.
One thing I wanted to note is that when going through this law, there was a requirement under the law that as you make adjustments, you cannot lower people's salary to make it equitable. In other words, all boats rise. You bring people up, you don't bring people down. Next slide, please. Oh, it's already on there. Okay, so pay equity at Washington County, just focusing in on what we're doing. In 2019, we did hire a consultant, Inova, which is essentially an attorney who has an extraordinary amount of experience in employee pay equity. She has been a fantastic resource for the county. So she has been working since September 2019. She reviewed all 447 class specifications that we have. She has done, you'll see in the later slide, 112 interviews with supervisors. She's worked with human resources. She's done a lot of work to go through our organization. What is she looking for? She's looking for jobs of comparable character. And that is a key factor with pay equity. So what does that mean? It's work that requires substantially similar knowledge, skill, effort, responsibility, and working conditions in the performance of the job. It's not looking for jobs that are the same. And I'll show you in the later slide for an example of what that might look like. So it's looking for jobs that have comparable character. So a job in the juvenile department, a job in facilities, could end up with a score that is comparable. And what that means is those two positions should both be placed on the same pay scale. So Inova also took a look at our individual hires since this law took effect. We did have to make some changes as the law came into effect and we figured out how we're supposed to do this. So there were a few people that were hired in 2019, in the early part especially, that didn't have their salary matrixed like we do right now. So we're going through individual people and making sure that we have their salaries correct. Next slide. So pay equity, I think this is where it gets a little bit confusing. It is an internal comparison. So what pay equity is, is looking at comparing our own positions at Washington County to each other to determine which ones have work of comparable character. It's understandably confusing. It's not looking at what Washington County pays compared to what other organizations pay. That is a separate process completely and not part of the pay equity law. Next slide. So this is a quick timeline for the county's work. We started in September 2019, as I said, reviewing all these positions and looking for work of comparable character. And with COVID, it took a little bit of extra time as we're trying to meet with people and get all that information together. So as we got to September this year, we're doing those individual comparisons, which also takes quite a bit of manual efforts to make sure those are correct. So we were in the process of going through, looking at all of those. We have the initial data back, making sure that they're all correct, you know, checking to make sure that what the consultant has, what Inova has is accurate. We're going through all that process. We plan to, in January of 2021, have all of this put together as far as what does this mean to the county as far as cost and making sure we have that lined up and we can then communicate it to your board, to the CAO, departments, and of course, employees. We want to be as transparent as we possibly can in this process. There's no secret to it. And same when we're hiring employees. We're very upfront about how people get a certain salary and why, and it's very objective. So this is the same type of process. Are there any questions on the timeline? Okay, next slide, please. So this is just a quick snapshot of where we've been and what we've gone through. So we've had seven planning sessions. We did have six county training sessions. Those were with supervisors and managers to help them understand what we're going to be asking of them when we met with them. Had 112 supervisory meetings, looked at 447 of the class specs, and then we had, went through certainly all of our policies. And that is why we're here today, because we needed to make changes to the personnel rules that reflect the pay equity law. Next slide. So this is just a quick example of what we mean by the methodology. So what was considered. Looking at each position, knowledge, in other words, their formal training, their education, the skills, the kind of experience needed, communication needed, interpreting laws, what that looks like. Effort includes both physical exertion, mental exertion, and also the complexity of tasks. The responsibility. So this can include supervision and then also the responsibility each position has for financial, operational, personnel policy, and strategic decisions. And then finally, working conditions. That can be both physical conditions, outside, inside. It can also continue with what kind of people you interact with, customer service you have to do, and then field assignments, and also potential hazards. Some positions are absolutely more hazardous than others. Each of these is assigned a very specific number, which makes this process objective. So it's ranging between 1 and 5, but not just 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It could be 1.35. You know, it's going to be very detailed. So this is information she's gathering from the class spec and also speaking with supervisors and with human resources. So it's an objective process to get to an objective result. Next, oh, you got it, next slide. All right, so the results came together. The feedback from the supervisors, looking at the positions, HR feedback. It was interesting, Inova told us at the beginning, yeah, everybody thinks all their positions are very unique. Well, what we found out is our positions are very unique. So we had 15 comparable groupings. And what that means is we had at least two or more jobs that should be by pay equity grouped together. Of those 15, 11 were not already grouped together. After continuing work, looking at clarifying information with supervisors, and we are narrowing that field down, it's more along the lines of nine or eight at this point that we will need to change groupings, the pay ranges that you see in our pay plan. Some of those are very, most of them are very small changes, one pay grade off type of things. So we were happy to report that we were actually right on track. We were very, very comparable to where we should have been. Still a great exercise to go through. We did find some that needed to be adjusted, things that were comparable that we maybe not have thought of.
So if I'm reading this correctly, we had 11 recommended pay grades that may be less out of 447.
Right, right.
That's pretty good.
We were pretty happy with the result.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a good day when she came and told us that. So next steps. First is we're going to look at the recommended adjustments and looking at which positions do need to be moved in the pay grade system, and then the individual changes that need to be made by people who were not hired appropriately at the right pay when they started. I will have numbers for you. We'll communicate that with you and the CAO, department leadership, and employees, making sure everybody is aware of those changes. We will have a presentation. We'll come back to your board with the consultant from Inova, and we'll go through it in great detail. So you'll have all the information that you need. We're still hoping to have this by January 2021. And then it's estimated every five years we need to redo this, just to recalibrate, make sure we're on the right path, and make sure that we continue to monitor our positions as they change to make sure that we're doing the right thing and having the right positions grouped together by comparable character. So what questions do you have?
Commissioners, any questions?
I have a comment and a question.
Certainly.
Anyone who's employed folks over any length of period of time understands that even though you can have the same skill sets, you can have the same requirements, all of the things that you put in there don't produce at the same level. You may be a superstar and I may be not so good, and we're in the same job and you're producing twice what I produce. We've dealt a little bit with that in regard to Clean Water Services when we had gain share, and that was the whole concept behind that. What, if anything, is a county doing to recognize that people, no matter how hard you try, you can't fit them into little boxes and say, just because we have the same number of years of experience, the same background, the same skill sets, that we're going to be the same? We're not. So are we doing anything forward-looking to say we need to not only protect and try to move our stars forward, but to maybe compensate them different for production differences?
Yes, thank you for that question. So we have been discussing taking a very strong look and getting some outside feedback on our pay structure. And also, this falls into employer choice, falls into both of those areas. I think there are other ways we can look at compensating our employees and making sure, one, the first step is making sure we have a really great performance management system and making sure that we're holding our employees accountable. Both of those things, I think, are extremely important. And then looking at our system of pay, how we're approaching it, how we're approaching total compensation. And that can include a lot of different factors. So yes, that's absolutely on the radar. We need to make sure that we are offering our employees the best options we can. And I think a big piece of that is also training and development to identify people who may be struggling a little bit and giving them lots of opportunities to improve.
It's not part of today's things. But when you say it's on the horizon or you're looking at it, what does that mean?
Chair Harrington, Jack Leong and Eva Levante and I met actually on this yesterday to talk about launching an HR assessment that will look at our current HR services, which includes our comp and class, philosophy, also structure, HRIS, which is our operating system for HR, training and development. So all aspects of HR, and coming out with recommendations and then an implementation roadmap. All of this, we will not be able to achieve in year one, but starting to plan out what does it look like for the next three to five years? And how do we stage this work to really have an employer of choice HR function in the county?
That's a good message.
And I've also come to appreciate in having Ms. Angie on board about talent management and really upgrading our systems for where we need to be good base, clearly, but how do we take that a step further? Commissioner Treese?
I have a question that's really more qualitative than quantitative here. And, you know, while the results look great, are you confident that there isn't something in that we're not seeing in the results? In other words, you know, it's good to know that those jobs are all in alignment. But is there anything that you suspect might not have come through the evaluative process?
Thank you for that question. You know, I think the piece that isn't a part of this study is the market comparators. Right, so we have some positions that are just historically more difficult to fill. And, you know, being a public sector employer, we're not in a situation where we can just randomly decide to increase the pay range, right? So I think that's always a concern of how, and that's part of being an employer of choice and part of looking at all those things that we can offer our employees besides pay. But I think it's, I think the great thing about this is it really allows us to, it really allows the supervisors to not be in that discussion about the salary piece. That's a huge benefit that we've seen, where it's very objective. And one thing, we are able, we're figuring out all the time new ways that we can maneuver and get people. For example, if you're an exempt employee and somebody comes in with 20 years of experience and they want a vacation bank to start, we can do that. We just lower the salary by the value of the vacation bank. So we're getting to, we're learning to be very creative and continuing to evolve, making sure why Inova is so fantastic is that we can ask these questions of her and making sure that we're staying within the law, but we're being as supportive of our new and current employees as we possibly can be.
And Eva, if I may be able to add a little more to that. And Commissioner Treese, thank you for a very good question. And we also want to recognize that whenever we discuss about people's compensations and benefit, it's a very sensitive matter, it's a very personal matter. And then also that we're trying to stay as objective as possible, there's still interviews that's being conducted, there's still human judgment that's in that process. And that is part of the reason why we're not taking the recommendation from the consultant and treat that as a result. We're actually going through a very detailed review process within HR this way. We're taking a little longer just to make sure that we're not missing anything, just to make sure that we're considering all the possibilities that's in there before we actually reach a final result to disclose that to the county employees. And we are actually very committed to having sufficient support, having a very transparent process, and really having very good communication throughout that process when we get to a result. So I just wanted to provide that additional information for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. That's very true. And our department directors have been fantastic working with several of our senior business partners to make sure we have the information right. So it's been, it's been very helpful, very collaborative.
Any last questions, commissioners? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to open a public hearing with regard to these proposed personnel rules and regulations. Do we have anyone in the room who wishes to testify on this? No? Mr. Moss, do we have anyone who signed up to testify during this public hearing?
We do not. Madam Chair.
Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And we have before us a resolution in order to amend the Washington County Personnel Rules and Regulations. What are the wishes of the commission?
I move for the recommended action.
Second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Commissioners, before I move on to the action agenda, which today consists of three different items, I want to plant a seed in your mind to ponder over the next several minutes remaining in our business meeting. It is just after 12:30 in the afternoon. We have a very full work session agenda. We will be taking a lunch break, but I would like those of you who have items for this afternoon or in early evening to think about if you wish to participate in our work session via Zoom, to ponder that, that's all. So that we can figure out an action plan for our lunch break before we reconvene in a work session. That's all. I hope I'm not out of turn in mentioning that. Appreciate it. All right, today's action agenda, we have three items. The first one is to conduct the first reading of the Urban Road Maintenance District Ordinance Number Four related to the expansion of the Neighborhood Streets Program eligibility to residential collectors and other minor amendments. We did have a work session, a rather extensive work session, as I recall, on this matter. Today is a first reading. Do we have a motion to read this ordinance by title only?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Mr. Anderson?
URMD, Ordinance Number Four, in ordinance amending Ordinance Number Three to adopt an updated Urban Road Maintenance District Service and Financing Order to Allow order to allow expansion of U R M D's Neighborhood Street Program.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We have a second reading and the first public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November 17th, so in a couple of weeks. Wonderful. We'll move on to the second of three action items. This-
Excuse me, Madam Chair, do we do we need to make a motion to do that?
Yes, yes, we do, Commissioners.
I'd so move that we continue this till the 17th, I believe, yeah.
Second? We have a motion and a second to continue this item to November 17th as described. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you once again, Mr. Rogers, for making Commissioner Rogers for making sure I follow the appropriate rules of order and procedure. Okay, the next action item is what had been published previously as the Coronavirus Relief Fund Work Group Recommendation on Real Allocation of Funds. We had a rather extensive presentation during our work session meeting today. But given the importance of this matter, we wanted to move it from the original published consent agenda to our action item agenda. We do have a marvelous document in our packet today which illustrates the recommendation and the value. And at this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to our Chief Financial Officer and Director of Support Services, Jack Liang.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. For the record, my name is Jack Liang, Director of Support Services, Chief Financial Officer. And I am presenting to you today the C R F Coronavirus Relief Fund Work Group Recommendation on Reallocation of Funding in the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And this recommendation has been discussed as a by the work group multiple times and then has also been briefed to your board this morning, at this morning's work session. So there is a memo that's attached to this item, and then the total recommendation totals close to $15 million. And that is the amount that we're recommending to to reallocate. And at this moment, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions, and I'll hand it back to you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or are there any comments you would like to make?
Madam Chair, I'd move for the recommendations that we can discuss.
Second?
Are there any other Commissioner comments, Commissioner Trese?
I would just like to commend the C R F Work Group and staff for taking this proactive step and making sure that we are addressing what our community needs are in the appropriate fashion. So thank you for your work on this.
I would just say ditto to that. Thank you.
And I will note, we we as an organization and as the leadership here on the Board of Commissioners have learned a lot as the spread of this virus and the associated economic crisis has affected our community. Many folks have been very nimble and flexible, and I appreciate the leadership of my fellow commission colleagues to learn from that, entertain new strategies to better meet the needs of our community, particularly with the focus on vulnerable populations here in Washington County. We have a motion and a second to approve today's action. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you, colleagues. We last approved, or we first approved this framework back on June 2nd of this year, and a lot of great work is happening each and every day by our wonderful Washington County staff and community-based organization partners. Onward, ho we go. The last item on our action agenda was an item from our consent agenda as originally published. It is to award a contract for the Armory Roof Replacement Project. We had a question come in through the public comment period with our staff earlier, and I see that Mr. Liang is here with us to provide some further insight.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and I would like to bring up Geoffrey Kowalja for this part of the presentation. And for the first part of the presentation, and first of all, we'd be very happy to answer any community community questions on any of the county's projects. And Geoffrey is a project manager for this particular project. And I will have Geoffrey start by providing a quick overview of the condition of the armory roof and then the necessity of this project at this moment.
Oh, Geoffrey.
It's got to come on.
The green one.
There you go. And also, in your overview, if you could remind us of the process by which we acquired this building and examined that and now identified the need for the roof replacement.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. So I'd like to give a quick overview about this project. As you know, this project was originally used as armory with the Oregon Military, and we did go through a process whereby it reverted to the county to be used as a facilities maintenance building. So prior to that, we did an extensive due diligence. We did a physical investigation just to make sure the buildings, understand the building condition and what needed to be done to really bring it up to speed for future uses and really make it a useful facility for county. So prior, and in addition to that, we did all the environmental tests just to make sure everything checks out. And following that, there was a discussion, I think, and you are part of that as part of the F A C Board that went through, looked at the project and looked at the maintenance plan. And this was one of those projects that were put as a priority to be improved for use of the fairgrounds. So as a result of that, went through the capital call process and got the project budgeted for from the maintenance plan. And then we did a competitive procurement process where we published the project on procure now the county's premier system for sending out any projects, small and big, to the public and let it out. Let the project be out there for a considerable amount of time for folks to bid on it. And then we did go through the process of selection of the contractor. And today, we are here before the board to present the contractor was selected through a very competitive process. And this is not just based on the amount, it's also based on, you know, their competitiveness and their expertise on that kind of a project. So we have Carlson Roofing as the contractor.
Yeah, and Chair Harrington, as a part of your question is that the county entered into agreement with Oregon Military Department back in 2010 to acquire this property, to add to part of the county's fair complex portfolio. And then they actually vacated in May 2019, and then that's when the county took possession. And before that, we have very little access to the building in terms of assessing the condition of the building and what are the kind of work that needs to be done. So that we have always known that the roof could be a problem, but over time, the estimate on that has changed a couple of different times just because that we didn't have sufficient access to really do a full assessment of it. And that could be part of the reason that we may have had some community misunderstandings of what that true estimate is. So the latest work that has been done by our facility team is we engaged with a consultant, specifically a roofing consultant back in spring of 2020, that's earlier this year, and then did our final estimate. The estimate actually came out to be about $500,000 in term of replacing that roof. And that was actually also included in our fiscal year 2021 budget. So so it has been a planned project for that amount since the beginning of this fiscal year. And then the actual bidding actually came in under the $500,000. It's actually a favorable result as a result of the bid. We'd be happy to answer any of your other questions.
Just for the public, why I asked to be pulled off is there was some comment regarding a million dollars that we send aside, and I don't know whether that's factual or what's happening. Is there any money that's been set aside for the Armory Building? And then after we get this new roof on, which is badly needed, do we have a building that has some life to it? I mean, is it, we're not going to be replacing every stud and floor and everything else in there, are we? Where were we? Where were we generally at then? If you could explain, and that was one question, the second is-
It is certainly true, and I'm speculating that the question may be arising from last year's budget for the Fair Complex where we did have a million dollars budgeted in capital outlay under the Capital Improvement Program, under the general, the overall Fund 200, which is the Fair Complex Fund. It includes three programs. One of the program is the Capital Improvement. In addition to that, we have the Operations and Interim Rentals Program as well as the County Fair Program. So it's, it is coming from that portion of the budget where we budgeted $500,000 for this roof replacement because it is identified as an urgent and pressing need for that particular building to ensure that it's continuous operation. And there are other maintenance needs that has been included in the maintenance plan for the Fair Complex, but none of those other ones were planned for the fiscal year 2021. So we definitely have sufficient funding for 2021. And then I know that the Fair Complex team is working continuously to not only build a business plan that will be sustainable for capital improvements, but really build a business plan that's sustainable for the entire business operations. So I, if there's any additional information that's needed, I'd be happy to work with Lea to bring back more information on this topic.
You answered the budgetary one, but Jeffrey, is the building sound we're going to have for another 40 years or?
Yeah, so to answer the question on the building condition, actually, we did do due diligence. We brought a structural engineer, they did the evaluation. And the only thing that was proposed that needed immediate attention was the roof. So with a new roof, the building gets a new lease of life, and it can be used appropriately for operations and maintenance functions, the Westside Commons.
Okay, thanks.
I would like to recognize that part of what we're dealing with in this matter is a historic lack of trust with regard to the maintenance of the assets that we used to refer to as the Washington County Fairgrounds, that we now refer to as the Westside Commons. This is where we've made improvements, particularly with the Fairgrounds Advisory Committee. We went through an extensive, multi-year planning with a master plan. And this yearly maintenance that includes this project does not in any way jeopardize the future work to be done as part of that master plan. The process of examination for this project, as well as the annual operations and maintenance plan has been fully publicly available through the Fairgrounds Advisory Committee. I remember that being a meeting before COVID because it was in person. And all those records were available publicly for that meeting. But we do still need to be prudent about our availability of information and entertaining questions from the public. So I appreciate Commissioner Rogers moving this item from the consent agenda into the action item. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from our colleagues?
We just have a just a detail here. We mentioned in the requested action G S I builders as opposed to Carlson Roofing?
Yeah, my apologies. That was a staff error that was included in the agenda. It was actually left over from a previous agenda where we used it as a template to build a new agenda, so.
Okay, I just want the record to show that, and I would, at the appropriate time, move for acceptance of the bid award to Carlson Roofing.
So I pointed out that error to staff on Friday afternoon and was told that they would be correcting that with the update of the packet on Monday.
Yes. Madam Chair, if I may, the the request has been corrected on the online version. The staff packet presented to Commissioner Scouten and Trese was printed before that correction was made. So that's why they don't want.
Correct.
All righty. So we have a motion to approve this Armory Roof Project. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of awarding the contract for the Armory Roof Replacement Project, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liang and Mr. Kulya for being here with us today on that item. Mr. Moss, we'll move on to the second oral communication period of our meeting. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. We have Kumar Narhajar. I apologize, Kumar, if I named, but can you hear us?
Look, Moss, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
The floor is yours.
Yes, and good afternoon, Chair Harrington and the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for providing me the opportunity for oral public testimony today. My name is Kumar Naharaja. I've been a resident of Washington County since December 2017. The issue that I call your attention to this afternoon is related to the Washington County Law Library. The Board of Commissioners has direct jurisdiction over the law library as it is governed by the board, and it's administered by the Circuit Court Presiding Judge. I've been a patron of the law library since December 1, 2017. On average, during the pre-COVID-19 era, I have regularly used the legal resources and other services available at the law library, on average, about three to four times per week, lasting from 30 minutes to around two hours. The law library, at the start of the pandemic, closed its in-person access to the public and around March 18, 2020, reopened June 8, 2020. And since that time, the library has been offering limited in-person access to the public. There were several scheduling policies that the library developed and which until October 30 last week afforded public patrons limited access to in-person services. These were in the form of 45-minute time-sensitive appointments that could be obtained by any patron, subject to availability, and each patron could have no more than one 45-minute unexpired appointment at a given time. Excuse me. Importantly, although access was limited, there was no limitation on the number of visits each patron could avail per week. However, effective November 2, 2020, yesterday, under the headline of "expanded access to the law library", quote unquote, "expanded access to the law library", the law library has newly imposed unwarranted restrictions to public patron access by limiting patron access to two visits per person per week. These were, as I mentioned, effective November 2, in stark contrast to the Hillsboro Public Libraries, which are doing excellent work for the community by seeking ways to increase its in-person services while conforming to the COVID-19 protocol. The goals of my presenting this testimony are threefold. Firstly, I ask the Board of Commissioners to intervene, increase access to individual public patrons by retaining the former format of scheduling appointments that did not limit the number of visits per person per week, which was in effect until October 30. Second, to increase transparency in local county government. Third, I'm requesting the Board to direct the administration to open three hours of county time at the law library each day that is not being put to efficient use each day. Currently, the law library is open 8 to 5 p.m., out of which three hours are blocked by staff for lunch break and other undisclosed, unexplained reasons. I ask the Board to remove and or prohibit the newly imposed limitation on number of patron visits to two per person per week as it violates O R S 9.815 subsection 1, paragraph A, which provides that each county shall operate a free law library at a location that is convenient and available at reasonable hours. The reason I believe it violates this statute is that each patron's needs are unique, and a patron may have litigation in different states, which imposes substantial hardship on parties to litigation. And it may preclude ability to perform research adequately, effectively, in a timely manner, and it may compromise the ability to comply with deadlines, court deadlines. In the past, the Washington County Law Library was privileged to have Ms. Laura Orr, an illustrious librarian who advocated for public patrons. In Ms. Laura Orr's words, "Access to justice is a constitutional right guaranteed-" In Ms. Laura Orr's words, "Access to justice is a constitutional right guaranteed under Article 1, Section 10 of the Oregon Constitution. Access to justice involves more than simple access to courts. Each Oregonian should have equal access to legal information and legal research assistance." And I'm asking, I'm requesting the Board to increase transparency in local government by posting the number of public patrons that have used the law library live or at the end of each day. And this may be done by, may be limited to protect the privacy of patrons by redacting appropriate personal information. Thirdly, as I already addressed this earlier, I'm requesting the Board to have one open, one hour open reserved to any public patron who wishes to avail its services. By my personal observation, currently, the need for patronist access is not acute enough, especially since I have personally witnessed that a substantial chunk of users are parties to landlord tenant litigation. And since the moratorium is in place, there is no reason to impose restrictions of two per week. I request the Board to consider these proposals, to remove the limitations on individual public patrons, and to recommend the county administration to retain the former format of scheduling appointments that are not limited to any number of visits per week, which was in effect until October 30. Thank you.
Ms. Angie, I assume that the administration of the law library falls under your portfolio?
Yes, it does. Chair Harrington, Board of Commissioners, Deputy County Administrator Erin Culvert is working with the law library staff and is aware of the resident's concerns. If the resident, thank you for the well-spoken testimony, I just want to raise that. If the resident does have that in written form and can submit that, that would be helpful for us, too, and we will follow up with the Board at a future meeting.
I just have to comment, I mean, the last time I really did, and I'll start with a disclaimer. The last time I really did any extensive legal work was probably five or six years ago. But I did do, I did do a lot of legal research in the law library back in the late 1990s. And I know a lot has changed since then, and there's a lot more access electronically to stuff that's at your fingertips, the computer. Nonetheless, legal work by its nature can be very complex and demand a lot of concentrated time, particularly in areas that you're trying to develop some expertise in, or an area that you're not as familiar with. And 45-minute block is, at least in my past life, would have been just enough time to get, sort of pull the books off the shelf and lay stuff out and get my thoughts together. So, and for someone who doesn't have the resources that you could afford in a large firm for a large collection of books and materials, the law library is the only true place in this county to really have enough adequate resources to do, you know, reasonably good legal work. So it's pretty important. It's a pretty important resource. I just want to say that with a disclaimer that I have not done significant legal work in recent years, but I can imagine that things have changed so much that he's raised, our gentleman here has raised some serious concerns that I hope that we take seriously.
Mr. Naharaja, I hope I've pronounced your name closely. Feel free to correct me.
Naharaja.
Naharaja, thank you. Would it be possible for you to share your comments in any written form with our board clerk, Kevin Moss?
Yes. Yes, Chair Harrington, I can.
Thank you. And as our county administrative officer, Ms. Angie, has cited, she will look into this matter and come back to us for further information. And so if you're also able to provide some contact information, we'll be able to get back to you as well.
I will, Chair Harrington.
Great. Thank you very much for your comments today. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Moss, is there anyone else signed up today?
We do not have anyone else, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is board announcements. We have a roundtable meeting this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Then next Tuesday will be just a work session day, no board meeting. That leaves just the November 17th meeting for the last set of business, excuse me, work session meetings, followed by business meeting. That will be an evening business meeting at 6:30 in the afternoon with our work session starting at 2:00. That'll be a pretty action-packed day because we have the AOC conference starting that morning. So it will be a long one. And if I recall, the agenda for that evening meeting, it's pretty packed, too. We will not be having board meetings the week of the Thanksgiving holiday, of the week of November 23rd. And then, then we're into December. We do have the county end-of-year message on Monday evening, November 30th. And then on Tuesday, December 1st, we will have a work session at 8:30 in the morning, board meeting at 10:00, and a roundtable later that Thursday. That's it for board announcements. Anything else from commissioners on board announcements? So I wish Commissioner Scouton a easy COVID test and a wonderful vacation here this month in November, as well as to Commissioner Willie as well. Much deserved breaks. And I'm taking one, too, the week of November 23rd. So commissioners, before we adjourn, a lunch break, and then we have a very full work session agenda. Would you like the one-hour lunch break so that you can have lunch and a break and then get where you need to be for participating in the afternoon work session?
Yes.
I'll be zooming in.
Okay.
And I will be zooming as well.
Okay. As best as you're able. That will be wonderful. Okay, terrific. Well, I'll be here in the room as well to work the logistics with staff. But this is why we have these flexible logistics, so that we can get our work done. So do we have a motion to adjourn today's board meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. That's it for today, November 3, 2020. Please be sure to return your completed ballots by 8:00 p.m. to an official ballot return box. Thank you.
All right. Madam Chair, I will open up the afternoon Zoom link, just so we don't lose it.